Good to go.
Okay, the Smithville Board of Alderman Work Session, all decision. I would say. The first item on the agenda is the discussion of the six month budget review.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna bring that up. Alderman Sarver, can you see the screen here?
Yes.
Okay, let's share and everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, we'll kick off the work session here tonight with our fiscal 21 budget update. This presentation is going to show you data through the six, first six months of our fiscal year. And the data is of April 30th, 2021. I know there's a lot tonight on the work session agenda, so I'll try to be brief with this PowerPoint. But pleasure to come to you tonight and share this data here. So just a few comments before we get started. This six month budget update will feature some fiscal year 21 projections along with the budget and the year to date for our major budgeted funds. The budget amendments that have been approved by the board are included in here, one through four. And the expenditures have 13 of our 26 fiscal year payroll, so about 50% of our personnel service wage related expenses has been paid. So with that, I'll start off by looking at the general fund. On our revenue projections, six months through on the general fund, we're looking real good at this point. Right now, we're projecting about $4.9 million in revenue and we've budgeted about 4.6. That projection puts us about $280,000 over budget. You can see there, we've collected nearly $3 million this year. We've received about 64% of our budget and you'll see here in the next couple of slides that that projection versus budget, the higher projection is really driven by sales tax and use tax collections. Moving to the expense side, we are projecting to be a little bit under budget, right now about $300,000. And that's really driven by some vacancies that we've had in various city departments that saved us not having that expense on the payroll. Looking at those revenues, looking at the property tax revenues. This year, we've budgeted 886 and right now we're projecting to receive about 925. And year to date, we've collected about 918. So we should receive, certainly should receive more than what we've budgeted. One item, just to point out is that our finance staff has addressed the pilots, the payment in lieu of taxes owed to some of our local agencies and jurisdictions, so we've sent those payments to the school district, to the fire district and the ambulance district. We've also transferred the amounts that belong to those districts that belong in the special allocation fund that are attributable to those districts levies. We just need to finish up here and work with our legal staff to make sure we get all the pilots to the library and the county. And then our three year trend of property tax revenue, you can see there's a pretty steady increase of about $40,000 from one year to the next in quarter two. So we have good consistent growth in property tax. On the sales tax side, we've budgeted $1.2 million for fiscal year 21 and we're projecting about 1.8. So that puts us about $70,000 over budget right now. And we've collected about 600,000, so we've received nearly half the sales tax. We tend to see more sales tax in the summer months when consumer activity picks up. And that budget, budget number 49% looks good. We're typically getting about 45 and a half percent of our sales tax at this point in the past three years of what we eventually receive. And then here's our sales tax trend through quarter two. You can see each year we've seen growth of about $40,000 to $50,000 year over year through quarter two. So that's, looks like good consistent growth. Looking at the use tax, this is really another area that's doing really well. And I think it's driven by some changes in the consumer environment, people getting items delivered, people making purchases on Amazon and through the internet, becoming a more dominant way to purchase items. We budgeted about $415,000, we're projecting about 550, so we're looking to exceed that by well over $100,000 and right now we've received 300,000. So this is about 72% of the budget that we've received already halfway through the year. So this is one that Cynthia and I are keeping our eyes on and we're glad it's performing well and see how it finishes up at the end of the year. The use tax trends through quarter two. We did have a little bit of a dip last year, but I think as the pandemic took hold and people changed their purchasing habits, that use tax really exploded in the latter half of 2020. And right now, we're seeing tremendous growth there in 2021, 300,000 year to date versus our previous quarters, 19 and 20, we hadn't yet made 200,000 at this point, so it's a very strong year for use tax. Moving on to some of our major, other major budgeted funds, the capital projects fund. The revenues in this fund are really the grant that we received for our Main Street Trail, the DNR grant. And Chuck's been working hard to get all the paperwork and items submitted to the state so we can get those reimbursements. We got one of our major reimbursements last month of about $208,000 and we'll be getting some more revenue there. And then on the expense side, we're projecting to continue to pay off the final portion of the Main Street Trail as we finish the trail and have the ribbon cutting, finishing up the payments on the invoices. And then continuing to log the expense for Streetscape East as that project gets completed. So looking to project in both revenue and expenses, the amounts that we've budgeted.
And Stephen, I just signed a paperwork today to add to that one too, so.
Okay, I'll look for that then. Looking at our capital improvement sales tax fund, again, this fund's performing well. If we look at our city sales and how well that performs. This is another good indicator of that. And so we're projecting about $615,000 on a budget of 530 and we've collected about 280 year to date. One note is this sales tax is not subject to the TIF eats collection, so all those new businesses that open up at the marketplace, we'll see some more in the coming months. You know, we're getting all of that sales tax deposited in that fund and not carving any of it out per the agreement. Looking at the budgeted expenses, really this fund pays for the debt service, transfer to debt service payment, which we've made that transfer. And then this fund is starting to help pay for Streetscape East projects, so we'll see more expenses posted in this fund is when we do our nine month budget update for Streetscape East. Here's the sales tax trend through quarter two. And you can see there, we have good consistent growth from 19, 20 and 21. And then in reference to a couple of slides ago, the debt service fund. This is helping us pay for some general, general obligation debt, series 18 and 19. And some are making an annual payments on that and by annual payments in March and September. We've transferred in the revenue that we need to help make those payments from the capital improvement sales tax fund. We completed that transfer and then below we have some interests that will finish up pain in September and that will put us to budget on debt service. Moving on to the transportation sales tax fund. Again, this fund's performing well with the sales tax perspective. It's a little lower than the other half cent sales taxes because that sales tax is subject to the TIF eats collection. Again, we're projecting it to finish about $70,000 over budget. We've collected, already collected 280 this far, so we still have our summer months to go. And then down below on the expense side, we're paying for projects such as the Bridgeport Roundabout, going to pay for more Streetscape East expense in here. And then also our street maintenance program that Chuck's been working hard on getting going. We'll start seeing expenses come out of there, so we expect to be expending the entire budget in that fund as well this year. And there's our three year history on the transportation sales tax revenue. You can see good consistent growth year over year. I did want to also put a slide in here so that you all could get an update on special allocation fund. This is the fund that houses all the revenue that's earned at the TIF. So it includes our economic activity taxes or our sales taxes that are generated out there that belong in here for marketplace agreement, the pilots and all the CID 1% sales tax revenue that we collect, we deposit in that fund. So through six months, we've collected about $180,000. I think we'll have a real nice sharp picture where we're going to be on the nine month budget update. At this point, I think we'll still receive about $520,000. On the expense side, this expense piece will really be determined on the review of the cost certification that is submitted by the developer and ensuring that our legal counsel has the opportunity to look at all the costs and certify that they do belong to the marketplace. And at this point, we've just received cost certification submission for our CID costs. So those are right now being reviewed by the legal counsel.
And Stephen, if I could jump in just one second on the special allocation fund. Alderman Chevalier inquired at a recent meeting with regard to reporting related to this fund. We are required to provide periodic reports, annual reports on the performance of the TIF because we don't really have a full year of revenues on that. We are targeting a fall report, probably a September, October timeline. So that really was fall last year that things really started to come in on a revenue side there. So we will report the annual information in the fall on this fund.
Yeah, thanks Cynthia. Look here at the water and wastewater fund, switch gears to that fund here. On the revenue side, we're again looking good here with projections of about 5.1 million in revenue. We've budgeted 4.8 and year to date, we've brought in about 2.4. We still have our summer, hot summer months ahead of us where water consumption will increase. Just as a general, how the distribution of the revenues are in this fund, water and wastewater sales make up nearly 90% of the budget. And then followed by impact fees and then some from penalties and disconnects and connection fees and stormwater fees. On the expense side, we're projecting to spend about 7.2. That number can be altered as we get closer to the end of the year and discussions with Chuck about how those projects are going and when, when they'll be completed, that'll come into a sharper focus as we finish the year. But at this point, I just wanted to mention that the 188th Street Waterline Relocation Project, they'll get some financial assistance from the state of Missouri. So that project that taken out of these projections since we'll get the assistance from there and not be paying for that. At this point, 1.7 is what we've expended, so we'll expect to see that number change here as we go to our nine month update as we keep working on those projects.
Stephen, I'm gonna jump in just one, oh, never mind, you're moving ahead, never mind, go ahead.
Okay, you, you don't want to say anything?
No, I'm good. I think you've got it here.
Okay, this is just a sharper look at the water and wastewater revenue. On the water sales piece, we're projecting to bring in about 2.7. We've budgeted about 2.5. We've already brought in about 1.2. We've already received about 47% of our budget. And at this point, in the past three years, on average, we're receiving about 43% of what we end up earning at the end of the year. So seeing that budget figure ahead of the three year trend percentage figure looks good at this point. On the wastewater sales side, we're projecting about 1.7 and a half on a budget of about 1.7. So that's helpful there and year to date, we've brought in about 800,000. And again, the percent received to budget figure of about 49% is ahead of where we typically are, what we end up receiving. So those figures look good as well. And then this is a nice graph that illustrates the growth in water sales and wastewater sales as our rates have changed and more people have moved into the city and accounts have been added. We're seeing increases in those water sales and wastewater sales. And year over year through the second quarter, we've seen those increase. Looking at the sanitation fund here, on the revenue side, we're projecting a little bit lower than budget, but not much. Received about $430,000 and our percent to budget to what we receive at this point is a very close number, so that that looks good. And then more importantly, we're projecting higher than the expenses, projecting spent about 860. And we've spent about 430 this year, so if that looks good from a fund perspective, we pay WCA on a monthly basis for those waste collection services. And you'll see some more information on the changes in the contract and what's been negotiated in the next presentation. So we'll have some more info there. It's also pretty typical at this point in the year to see expenses exceed revenues on the sanitation fund. So we're always just a little bit higher on expenses at this point. Looking at the park and stormwater sales tax fund, you'll see the projections and budget on this half cent sales tax is a little bit lower than the others. That first month, if you recall back in November of 2020, we started collecting this sales tax. So businesses are getting that on their rolls and making sure they get those payments into the state. This sales tax was enacted after the creation of the TIF, so it is not subject to the TIF eats collections. We're currently projecting to exceed our budget with the sales tax. And then below, we've started to make some expenses, starting to pay off some of those invoices as Matt's gotten with me on the splash pad. And as we finish up our Park Master Plan, we'll see some expenses there in that column at the nine month budget update. And then looking at our last fund for this presentation, the BRF. At this point, on our revenue side, we've made our $40,000 transfer of funds from the general fund that helps give the BRF some seed money that it needs to get going. We also have money that's budgeted for the sale of our turn in vehicles. And so at this point, we've sold eight of those vehicles throughout the months of March and April. So that's in total given us revenue of $73,000. On the expense side, we've got a couple of months, two to three months of leasing expenses that we've incurred with enterprise. And so as we start to finish up the year, we'll get a little better focus of what we'll be spending with enterprise as the year unfolds here. So overall, that fund is looking well through its first few months. That concludes the six month budget update. I can be ready to answer any questions if you have any. If not, I can turn it back to Alderman Sarver.
Anyone have any questions? Alderman Neil it all, you have anything?
Good.
Alderman Sarver. I know Kelly's at a ball game.
I don't have any questions though.
All right, cool. Alvin Atkins.
Looks really good. Thanks Stephen.
And Alderman Sheller's on here. I'm good with it. Everyone else is good with it. Doesn't like, look like Chuck spending his money as fast as he wants to, but we'll get there. All right. Next on the agenda.
Okay, can you see that, Mayor?
No, we're not seeing your screen. You're doing the department one, right?
Yep. Hold on.
There you go.
Okay, can you see that now?
Fires.
Okay, all right, well, we'll move on to the next portion of the work session. This will be a presentation that'll include all the department directors. And this is our fund and department review that'll give us a foundation for moving forward in the retreat on, I believe it's May 27. And before I turn over to Cynthia, I just wanted to say, it was a real pleasure to work with everyone and get everyone's content and get this prepared. There's a general format to the presentation where the departments, especially those in the general fund and utilities, they'll have two sets of slides. It'll feature a budget summary and the accomplishments of the department. And then on the next slide, it'll feature the department organization chart, I think that may be on the first slide. And then it'll have goals or discussion points for 2022 for the department. So that's how the, this presentation is set up. There may be some, you know, technical content or some things that, you know, there may be some more knowledge to be gained on, on some of those slides. So I know I've talked to Cynthia about this, there's tours out there that some of the Aldermen have talked about and can be potentially joining in the future to learn more about some of this content and some of the topics that tend to get a little more technical. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. But I'll kick it off here and I'll turn it over to Cynthia and we'll look at the general fund first. And we'll look at administration.
Very good. Well, the administration department, thank you Stephen, consists of basically Anna, Linda, myself and our current time legal counsel. Really in 2021, you know, our department coordinates and works with all departments and new organizations, so touch a lot of the projects. But big things for us in this fiscal year are the completion of City Hall renovation, which I saw in my report that contractor continues to indicate anticipated completion of this project the first week of June. We did run into an issue in the ladies room this week with a support wall, so I, I'm anticipating, as we've talked all along, late June, early July for final completion. We did onboard the Assistant City Administrator, Anna Mitchell started in February and has come onboard and, and working on a number of projects. And one of those is working Missouri Main Street Program. Anna continues to work with the board of that group and the downtown group and moving forward and plans there. The budget information is presented there, our budget is just under a million dollars. And some of the, as you'll see in most departments, personal services really reflect the bulk of budgets. About 82% of our budget. And that fluctuates a little bit depending upon the contractual services and commodities we look at and if in some years our capital projects budgeted. In 2022, some of the items that we are looking for or anticipate is inclusion of $14,000 to administer the Direction Finder survey. If the board will recall, and for those of you who are new to the board, in 2019, we contracted with Direction Finder, which is a group out of Olathe that does citizen surveys for communities around the country. And we posed a series of questions on customer satisfaction, citizen feedback. And anticipated that for two reasons, one, to benchmark ourselves against other communities that participate with Direction Finder. But then also to set a baseline for our level of satisfaction by our citizens and be able to measure that over time. Our plan has been to administer that on an every other year basis. It would be great to be able to do that more frequently, but I think sometimes we also look at some voter fatigue, excuse me, resident fatigue on surveys and we've done a lot with our strategic planning and comprehensive planning processes as well. And so we looked at that for the 2022 budget, we'd probably look at it as soon as the end of this calendar year to get, we had done it, administered it in the spring, the last time might be good to get ideas in, in the winter time. So that's one of the items we plan to include in the budget as we move forward. Another item we'd like to look at, making some improvements is evaluation of options to implement an electronic newsletter. Our newsletter currently goes out quarterly in the water bill inserts. We'd like to be able to come up with an electronic format to provide more, better and more accessible information to our residents and we'll explore that. And we've not yet determined costs associated with that yet. And as members who are continuing to serve on the board know, we have spent, we had anticipated in 2020 to spend some time on customer service and team building training. We've ramped that back up earlier this year and really want to focus on employee training, ensuring that we're focusing on customer service, a team environment and safety issues. The budget that we're presenting will include information as we have it based on the results of the compensation and classification study. We have selected a firm and are currently negotiating with McGrath Human Resources out of the Chicago area to do the employee compensation and classification study. We anticipate having that contract for board approval on June 1st, which then we would move right into work on that project. We anticipate to have pretty intensive work through the summer and then hope to have some good information for budget implications in the fall for that. Anna and I have been interviewing potential health insurance brokers and have, feel very comfortable with one of the interviews we did today. And Anna has reached out to that firm following some, some reference backgrounds. And we anticipate hopefully being able to bring it forward a contract on that in, on June 1st as well. And really there, want to focus on employee wellness programs that we can look at and how we look at the, the participation level of employees and the city and insurance and just better review and taking us out to the market, looking at those options that we might have. We also want to continue moving forward in the Missouri Main Street Program. We'll have some discussion about that in the coming, coming weeks as well. And then, you know, an overarching theme really on a number of items throughout the organization is working with the board, staff and community stakeholders in the implementation of those items identified in the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, the Parks and Recreation, Transportation Master Plans. We've got done a lot of work over the last 20 to 22 months and are at a point where we're coming up with priorities and looking for direction from the board as to what their priorities are and how we can move forward in that information.
Okay. All right, I'll give you an overview of the finance department here. On our left with our department structure, myself, Stephen Larson, started here in October of 2020 and been here for about seven months now. So it's been a really great journey so far and really like working for the city and looking forward to the future here. Under me includes Beth Stevens and Teja Gomez, our finance specialist, one and two. You may say, see Beth at the front desk, taking utility payments, processing our daily receipts and making sure everything flows smoothly from a customer service perspective. And then Teja Gomez, who helps run our payroll, manages payroll process, helps with bank reconciliation and has learned and taken over more of the utility billing aspects. So together, you know, we provide a lot of services to the city internal and, and external with utility billing to customers and internal services, budget and payroll services, W2s, all those services. On the right, some of our key accomplishments. When I began as finance director in October, one of my tasks was to get some final edits to our budget book and get that submitted to GFOA for the budget award. Prior to the preparation of that budget book, our very first budget book, which I believe Dan Talekis would have prepared, that did receive the award. So that means that our budget, our budget book has made good strides. That means that our budget, our budget book has made good strides and accomplishments in providing good transparent and easy to consume data that someone can open, go to different funds, go to different departments and easily see expenses and revenue summaries, see personnel summaries easily, there's a lot of different things that go into the award requirements. And our budget book has met those standards and received that award. The next thing I did when I got here and with the help of working with Cynthia and Anna was developing a five-year financial forecast for all our funds that we can use during the budget process. It allows us to do more in-depth trend analysis on our sales taxes and our use taxes, allows for some of that multi-year and multi-quarter analysis that you see in the six-month, three-month budget updates. And then we're looking to enhance this by continuing to add data and key insights to the revenues and expenses. And I'm looking forward, you see our finance analyst there on the left, looking forward to having her onboard, hopefully in June here, and and having her support as we build that forecast and make it a better tool for us. Back in March of twenty twenty-one, the board adopted an ordinance that provided a winter sewer averaging option to all new utility customers. Previously, our ordinance was more strict in requiring new customers who are opening a utility account with the city to have a bill that indicated usage. And so after adopting this ordinance, we're providing a new option to them where they can elect for the residential average. And so during the summer months when they're doing a lot of outdoor activities, they can have some savings on their sewer portion of their bill. We also onboarded myself and Teja Gomez over the last six months, and that's been a whole process in itself, making sure that can access all our accounts, access all our vendor information, everything that goes into that. Along with that onboard process, I've worked with Anna to make sure we've got our special allocation fund set up correctly and that we're doing all our allocations correctly, getting the school district, the fire district, the ambulance district, the amounts that they're owed for the property tax increments and and the the TIF process out at the marketplace. Just all of all of the knowledge and the learning that goes into that has been a process in the last few months. And finally, the the implementation of the VERF and also working with departments to sell their old vehicles and coordinate the new vehicles from enterprise. And that's been another process that finance has been involved in. Making sure we get all our ducky signs ready to go for our vehicles and that all our orders are correct and that all the vehicles are spec'd correctly and getting our in-house vehicles turned in to be sold. On the finance side, similar to what Cynthia said, our operating budget is about two-thirds people and then some commodities and contractual services for twenty twenty-two. One thing that I I'd look to see if the board has some input on is trying to create a more robust capital improvement plan. Right now, we do have some good summary sheets that give us annual capital improvement totals. But one thing we could look at is to build a more robust CIP that has project pages and helps us show where our investments and our capital improvements are helping positively affect our strategic plan and and how those projects help us achieve our vision, our goals that are set out in our strategic plan. I think there's some improvements that can come in that way, and I look forward to some input. The N code ten upgrade is another item that we'll work on here in the future, we have that in our pending list right now in our capital improvement plan. And something that I'll be working on to see what those benefits and advancements are that come with the upgrade. Another item that we have on our list in finance is to take a deeper dive look at the retail sales data that we get from the department or revenue each month and apply some categories to that and be able to show you how different categories perform in terms of whether it's grocery stores or or big box stores here in Smithville, local businesses, mom and pop stores, those sorts of things, trying to better show you how the category categorizing the businesses and the sales tax data and and showing you how those perform. And that's something I'm looking forward to having our finance analyst assist with. Another item is figuring out the funding mechanism for our police responder vehicles from the VERF. I think Cynthia, we haven't replaced responder vehicles since twenty fourteen, if I'm correct about that, so it's something that's certainly on our list and looking and see how the VERF can afford those vehicles.
We actually did replace them in eighteen.
Eighteen, okay, okay. The next point there, looking at our benchmarking efforts. We benchmark and have a number of performance measures for each department, and that's something I'd like to take a look at and see if we're measuring the right things. Continuing to participate in the regional benchmarking initiative through Mark and seeing how we compare to other communities. And then the last bullet there is continuing the review of our lease payments to the Corps of Engineers for the the cost of the infrastructure sharing out there. And that that payment is something that we have our eyes on because it does increase in out years with our interest rate in our current balance, and so. Cynthia and I have been meeting with representatives from the Corps to look at those payments and see if there's some possibly buyout options or or some other payment options available so that we could reduce that burden. I'll transition over here to Chief Lockford.
Thank you, Stephen. As you can see on the left, there are twenty-one of us, full-time employees with the police department and one part-time employee, prosecuting attorney. Fourteen of those officers are assigned to patrol. Two of them are assigned to the investigative unit and two are assigned to the SRO. That leaves Captain Rotman and I to handle the majority of the administrative duties, along with Jeanette, who works as our prosecutor's assistant slash police clerk. And then our prosecuting attorney who represents us in all our cases over at the court in Clay County. Some of our accomplishments. We've continued with our TASER replacement program, this started, I think we're in our fourth year now. Replacing a number of those every year, trying to stagger the ages on those so that they don't all hit end of life at the same time or at close to the same time. Last year, we started a similar program with replacing portable radios for the department. We purchased three of them in the nineteen budget, excuse me, twenty budget, and then three of them early in the twenty-one budget. And we'll expect that both those programs to continue into the next year. Continuing to just replace them as they age and they expect they approach life expectancies. And then earlier this year, we awarded a bid for our new records management software. And this is a project that is going to take up probably the lion's share of a lot of our time this year and next, we have a build team of about six individuals in the department that are working on this. And intensive meetings actually started today. And we'll continue through most of this week with the vendor laying the groundwork for how this is going to work for us. And then there's a lot of homework that's assigned, that's going to be accomplished there. And then one last thing that I realized as we're talking here that I that I neglected to put on here is something that's been kind of continuing continually ongoing for this year and unfortunately, probably into next, and that is recruiting and identification of good police officer candidates. We hired one full-time officer who is post-certified and we sponsored our first two police recruits who started the academy last week, so. That's kind of where we stand so far this year. If you go to the next slide, please, Stephen. You can see our budget there on the left, a little over two million dollars, and we're like most departments, the lion's share comes in at Personnel Services, right about seventy-five percent. Contractual Services and Commodities make up another large chunk of that, and then really our what might be considered discretionary spending is pretty low there. This year, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand, and in some years, it's even lower than that. Looking forward to twenty-two, we're going to continue aggressive recruiting to fill our positions and look at where we need to go there and try to even revitalize our reserve officer program that that we haven't seen in a few years. Stephen mentioned earlier about patrol vehicles and funding those through the VERF, we're gonna going to explore different options there, whether it's outright purchase or whether it's a lease option similar to what we've started with the fleet this year. We're going to look to purchase and install some new shelving in our evidence room, and that's really going to create more storage square footage in the same footprint and try to make that space more user-friendly and just trying to stretch usability of every square inch we have here in this building. We want to look at purchasing and standardizing patrol rifles for every vehicle in the patrol fleet. We also believe we need to look at purchasing what's called a CVSA device, computer voice stress analyst analyzer. It's used in pre-employment testing and in some criminal cases as well. And then as next year continues, we hope to get to full implementation on the records management system and get our entire department up to speed there and transition to this new system, hopefully by mid to late spring, possibly early summer next year. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Pete. Jack, you're up.
I kept hitting the wrong button to unmute, I apologize. I our department structure is on the left of the first slide, we are with five employees, myself, two building inspectors, one code enforcement inspector and then permit technician, which if you look at last year's budget, you'll see we were substantially higher, we moved over two of the utility inspectors into the Public Works Department, so that took those salaries out of the budget, so we are a a department of five now. As for our twenty twenty-one accomplishments, I think first and foremost, the adoption of the twenty thirty comprehensive plan was the most significant thing we did last year, it was a long process, I'd like to thank each of you again for the umpteenth time for being involved in that. Critical to the the future of the city, that gives us a path to move forward on how we do those things, so again, thank you on that. It is a beginning point, really, and we will continue this year, starting tonight with the first ordinance on some of the changes that are suggested in the comprehensive plan, so we're moving forward on that already. We also adopted the updated international building codes, it's part of our ISO rating for building code enforcement. Need to have updated codes, we have those, we have not heard back from the audit that we were went through here a few, a month or so ago. That ISO rating sets where we will be as it relates to new homes on the insurance for those homes. We've improved on that each year that we've had that audit, which is always good. We're at a level now between a four and a five and a six, right in that range, and a lot of it is just, it it hits down to the training and and those aspects, and you'll see some of those in the the next slide. And then we also adopted the new annexation policy and we began the key annexations from the board's strategic plan priorities, which would include Smiths Fork Park and the core area. And then we're working on Lakeside Crossing to clean up those spotty areas, we have more to do on both of those fronts, so hopefully we'll have more information on that as the months continue. If you could. Next slide, our budget summary, we're at four twenty-four, similar to Chief's reference, we're at eighty, almost eighty-five percent of ours is paying the the people that do the work. We have contracted services, which is engineering review, and we also have a contract with the IBTS folks who are assisting us with commercial plan reviews and commercial inspections once the buildings get out of the ground. We are working on that aspect to try to reduce that as we get additional certifications of our staff members. Our discussion points are for what we plan to do from today until the end of next budget year. And first is update the code enforcement software, we want to be able to improve our commuter computer programs such that we can draft our own notification letters and reports. When a inspection report goes out, currently, there's a lot of confusion because they say citation on them, but we have an old system that doesn't allow us to change that language, so we're stuck with that. This other system we're looking at also would would hopefully eliminate some duplicated work, so we're looking at that. The second point is to ensure all of the building inspectors have professional certifications in their respective fields, we have our first certified building inspector was certified in September of this last year in residential. We hope to have our other building inspector certified in in one certification at least by September of this year. And then we will continue to work with our code enforcement and the permit tech position to continue their training. To the extent that when the next audit occurs, if all of our inspectors have certifications, it raises us a point or so in the audit review and it could potentially lower insurance ratings for new houses in Smithville. As I mentioned earlier, we want to continue the process of implementing the comprehensive plan recommendations, first on the list is one of the ordinances on tonight's agenda at the seven o'clock meeting related to what the, one of the issues that was a high priority in the comp plan. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we want to continue to evaluate whether we, whether we and when we don't do no longer need the services of IBTS for the commercial construction inspections and plan review stuff. So that's what we've got for the next year.
Jack, do we have a minimum with IBTS?
A minimum.
Like, do we have, if we don't use them for the year, do we have to pay them anything?
No, it's purely à la carte, as they do work, we order the work, they they get paid on a à la carte menu.
For, I mean, as much commercials we've got going on, I think it's worth keeping it around because we're getting more residential going too, and your guys are going to be busy, so.
Yeah, and ultimately, I think our goal will be to get a commercial certified inspector on staff first. That would be critical, once we get that certification. And it's a possibility, we could have that by the end of next year. So if we get one at that point, we can, we can cease those services, I believe.
Yeah, but e- even if we do that, twenty-five, I mean, if you spent twenty-five K this year and we drop them down to we're using them even less, it's worth having it as a backup when one of your guys goes out sick or one of your people's out sick or you got twenty-three houses going up at the same time as in big commercial, I mean.
Well, yeah, I I think that's why we we specifically use the evaluate the need. We'd like to scale it back as soon as we can to handle it in-house.
Yeah. But yeah, I'm just saying at that price, I wouldn't see us adding any more headcount to that inspector, but, you know.
Sure.
Questions for Jack? Jack, on that software for code enforcement, would that help tie into our other customer relations stuff, so where, you know, Beth could pull something up for somebody if they called or or Andy?
Yeah, we currently have a system that has one operator on it, and she's the only one that has current access to it. So if somebody wants to ask a question like today, she's on vacation until tomorrow, so we can't answer the question until she gets back.
Jack?
Yes.
Could that be, the code enforcement software be able for a regular person to go on there to see what's needed?
No, no, to answer that question directly, no, it won't, this will be our ability to send out notices and okay, okay. maintain records, we do have plans to address those things on the website, we're working on that. We do have plans to address those things on the website. We're working on that currently with Linda.
Excellent.
I want to throw that in there as a bullet point, too, for your 2020 discussion points. It's in communication on the code enforcement. Who's next, Steven? Any other questions for Jack before moving on to Matt? Matt, how's the vibe there?
Quiet. It's quiet vibe here. As you guys see to the left, our apartment structure. Currently as director, I've been with the city of Smithville for four years, just a little over a year as director. Below me would be the recreation and marketing manager, which is Brittany Probst, and then the maintenance staff, Joe Chase and Gary. Brittany looks over any recreational part-time staff that she needs, and then our maintenance crew also hires part-time seasonal staff as needed as well. For our key accomplishments in 2021, one of the big projects coming in as director was to update the outdoor restrooms at our parks. There are five of them. We completed remodeling, which we epoxied the floors, we painted the walls, and we added the new fixtures such as toilets, sinks, and urinals at Heritage Park, Courtyard Park, at the campground restroom and shower house. The fixtures are in all of the restrooms, but we're only, we have two restrooms left to complete with the epoxy floor and to paint the walls, and that's at the spillway restroom at Smith Fork Park and up near the soccer fields at that restroom there. We're hoping to complete that within this year. The project is being completed in-house by two of our full-time staff, saving us thousands, which is really helpful. And that was probably one positive takeaway from COVID was the time to be able to go into those restrooms while they were closed down. So if you've been to the restrooms lately at the courtyard or out the campground or Heritage Park, it's a, it's a huge facelift, which was really needed. So we're hoping to keep those up to speed, so. With the CARES funds, we were able to install touchless fixtures with funds. We did the outdoor restroom as well as all city offices and department buildings. We were also able to install live streaming at Heritage Park Fields one and two. We were able to get that ready to go for fall T-ball, and that was a huge success, and people are one more at all of your other fields. As we partnered with Carney and our baseball softball, they've been wondering why Carney doesn't have it now, too. So sorry to Carney for that. For, we also completed eighteen more electrical fifty amp sites at the campgrounds. This has reduced the amount of campers we've had to turn away, which is awesome. We were somewhere around one hundred and fifty-five campers turned away last year. So upgrading these eighteen sites has significantly reduced that problem. Through COVID nineteen and twenty twenty, we were still able to grow participation in our rec programming. One, it was a huge success to even get programming in. In the fall, we were able to have soccer, volleyball, and fall T-ball. Fall T-ball was a new sport that we added into our program list. It's a huge grab within our, within our programs, and it's only growing each year. Into the spring, we had a new record of soccer registrations. We had one hundred and eighty soccer registrations, and also our clinics sold out. And then currently with baseball, softball, and T-ball that is going on right now, so both are going well. And then another accomplishment going into twenty twenty was the senior center. Assuming the responsibilities for the senior center rentals and coordinating special events, we've had multiple reservations come in for the senior center. The interest is growing as we promote it more. And for the event side of stuff, we have, you know, beginning of this year, we updated the facility use policies and updated the application there, and we're still working on a smooth transition into getting those all coordinated for the summer events that are coming up. For budget summary, you guys see the personal services there. One of the big ones for our budget this year was the capital improvement side. That was for phase one of the campground electrical upgrades. For discussion points, for twenty twenty-two, complete, complete the first prioritization of the parks projects as identified in the Parks Master Plan, including staff needs. So in that master plan, besides just the projects and figuring out how it's going to work, staffing needs has been evaluated heavily. Our Parks Department is only growing, and our future is bright, and the roles and responsibilities are growing. We want to make sure that the quality and the expectations can still be met, and we want to make sure that those are called sooner than later, so that way we're not scrambling. The one thing I talked with Cynthia and Steven about just yesterday was possibly combining phase two and three together within the capital, general capital fund, CIP. Talking with the previous contractor that completed the project this winter, we're, he believes, and I believe, that both combining them together would be cheaper and more efficient. We've talked about kind of the way we would go about that, and we could give those last remaining sites completed, completing in two years rather than three years. Currently, in the unupgraded site, it's very outdated, just as the other ones were, and we have had a couple electrical issues in those areas.
Hey, Matt, if I could jump in for just one second, he's talked about combining the campground electrical upgrade project. When we further discuss the CARES funds, which we'll have some discussion, we'll talk a little bit about this at the end of the presentation, but that's one of the areas that we'd like to have some discussion in utilizing the remainder of those funds to leverage some of these types of projects.
Thank you for clarifying, clarifying that, Cynthia. The next one was explorer expansion of contracting mowing and contract out landscaping. Currently, we are contracting out mowing in our downtown parks and city-owned property. We have seen a significant impact of contracting out has taken away a day of mowing and allows us to complete our mowing in about two and a half days, which leaving us about two and a half days to do other things than mowing and getting those maintenance projects done. Currently, we are in, I'm in conversation with landscaping companies to kind of see what that cost will be and kind of what that annual basis will look like. We also would like to establish programming of regularly scheduled fitness classes. Early takeaways from the Parks Master Plan was the need and the unmet need of senior fitness classes and fitness classes in general. Currently, Brittany was able to receive a grant from Clay County Senior Services to cover expenses for senior classes. We're going to be hosting those in the senior center starting next month, so we're excited for that. We also are coordinating to do the increased utilization of the senior center as talked about accomplishments. The interest is growing in the senior center, and the calls are coming in as we're promoting that more of the rentals and non-used time by the seniors. Their contract is expiring next year, so it will be good to talk about what the future of the senior center holds for the city as a whole. The camp host services at Smith Fork Campground, their contract is also expiring at the end of this year. As far as the return of the current camp host, we will, God forbid, and their future is still unclear. I have set up a meeting to talk with them kind of about the future. That way, we can get that RFP taken care of and that getting that published out there if we do need new camp hosts going into next year. And one thing that was added on today was fireworks. As of today, communication from the contractor let us know that the price will increase going into next year. So currently, we have budgeted twelve thousand. He said last year's fireworks cost him about fourteen thousand, but he expects us to be more than fourteen thousand if we want to keep our same fireworks show. And that's all I have.
Questions for Matt?
Good evening.
Hang on one second.
I guess I get to bring it home. I think everybody else took a lot more time than they said I had, but we'll just get started on this. So last year, I reported on the pavement condition index for the city of Smithville streets of a seventy-three point nine. I briefly just wanted to mention for our new board members, PCI is a relative score to pavement condition index, relative score that we've given to all the streets of Smithville based on their visual and parent condition. Last year, staff went out and reviewed and scored each block and segment of street in Smithville, and we use this number along with what type of traffic volumes and other things to determine which streets we need to maintain and what's the best maintenance treatment for them. So overall, we completed that first pavement condition index and gave the score of seventy-three point nine to the pavement here in Smithville. And we received two transportation grants from Mark this year. The streetscape, the north phase, I call it phase three, but it's the extension of the streetscape theme on Bridge Street from Church Street to First Street, including the sidewalks and the lighting and the bike lanes and resurfacing. We're going to receive four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for that project, and the total project cost is estimated at over seven hundred thousand, and that's a twenty-three project, FY twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. And then our other project that we received the grant for is the commercial street pedestrian project that will extend a six-foot sidewalk from the school district to downtown. That total project cost is seven hundred and fifty-six thousand. We got a grant of five hundred thousand, and that's an FY twenty twenty-four project. And the Main Street Trail is all but done. We're having some issues getting the solar benches in. The vendor that Amino Brothers had originally contracted with is not is not responding at this point, and they're searching for additional vendors, so we'll, we'll see where that's going, but that may take a couple more months before we see those solar benches. As Steven and the mayor mentioned, he signed today another extension of our grant amount, and we started this project with a grant award of two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and we will receive two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, and the final project cost is one point one million dollars. The staff has basically, like Jack said, two public works inspectors. They inspect both the public projects and their private development projects. They look at the public infrastructure of those private developments during this fiscal year. In addition to the public projects that they inspected, they inspected eight commercial developments and four subdivisions. And we completed the easement acquisition for the Main Street Trail and Streetscape East projects. Next slide. We have begun the transportation master plan. A pop-up informational meeting will be at Price Chopper on June twenty-sixth from one to three. We'll be getting more information out on that. And the transportation management plan will provide us a roadmap for future streets and trails, access management, safe routes to schools, complete streets and development standards. And the street department, Alan Jensen, our street division managers on the Zoom meeting tonight, complete a lot of work annually. Last year, they replaced seven hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk. They applied eighty-seven hundred pound crack seal. They responded to five snow events. They swept the entire town three times and the downtown every month. They mow and maintain twenty-two miles of right-of-way and twenty-seven acres of city property. And they do all that with basically five people. Here's our budget summary. One point two million dollars, almost about half, is personnel services. And twenty twenty-two, we want to go ahead and continue to provide engineering inspection services on our capital projects. It's very important that we have good inspection on these projects. The city and the community are spending a lot of money to have good projects put in, and our inspectors are the way that we make sure that we have good quality projects. And we want to still implement our GIS program. It's still a goal to get this started. It'll be a multi-year process, but it will help us locate our infrastructure, water sewer, storm sewer streets, and will assist us with asset management. And we recently met a few weeks ago with the county, Clay County, to discuss our share road agreement and reopen the discussion on the road district, so that the city would receive the road and bridge fund that Smithville residents pay for. Another project that we're working on is the public work, the streets. Yeah, the Public Works website, webpage. It's pretty basic right now, and we did extend an offer today. Maybe I'm taking away some of Cynthia's thunder, but we extended an offer to a candidate for a public works analyst, management analyst position, and she seems very very excited about the possibilities here in Smithville, and I think she can help us a lot with enhancing our presence on the, on the web, so that we can provide more information to the public about the status of our projects and what they are, how long they'll take, you know, what roads are going to be closed, what's going on, how to get ahold of us for, you know, whatever, right-of-way permits or whatever they need. So we need to improve that. And then we do have in the twenty-one budget, we have funds for the design of the parks and rec and public works facility. This facility will provide appropriate employee facilities, equipment storage, administrative offices, and material storage, or salt bill. Combined facility will allow these departments to work together when needed, share resources, equipment and personnel. The project currently, we're interviewing consultants next Thursday, and the design of the facility could be completed in the spring of twenty twenty-two with construction thereafter. And then we've had a few comments, and we really need to probably start thinking about this. We need to probably implement an annual street striping program. And we're estimating the cost of about twenty-five thousand dollars annually. But basically, what that would be are pretty much your center lines, your lane lines. We're not talking going into residential neighborhoods and putting center lines. These are on your major collector roads. And they could include crosswalks, especially around your schools, and stop bars. Increasing the PCI to meet community expectations and service levels, we're on a pro overnight. We asked to continue the annual funding of the pavement maintenance program. Improved asphalt specifications have been, we've already started that, and we've started requiring treated subgrades for all the new roads that are going in. There's a little bit of additional cost, but these improved materials will pay off over a long period of time. Maintain the city's transportation infrastructure in a safe condition. We want to make sure that timely response to repairing, repairing potholes and snow removal will keep our roads safe. And again, a pavement striping program will also improve driver and pedestrian safety. We want to improve on our response to report concerns. We'd like to at least get back with residents within twenty-four hours. Want to take a look at the street division staffing. Street Division currently has five working crew members and a street superintendent, who also works regularly side by side with the staff. During the summer, we have one person doing our street sweeping, and we have one person doing our mowing, pretty much full-time. If another person is off, then the remaining personnel available is only about two people to complete a project. Most of our projects that need to be done take three or four people. And during the most productive month of the year, we don't have sufficient staff to do large projects. During the winter months, additional staff. During the winter months, additional staff would also free up the superintendent to monitor the progress and quality of the snow removal process. Currently, the superintendent is out plowing areas just to get the roads open. In two thousand and eight, the city had approximately a hundred lane miles of road, and today we have a hundred and fifteen lane miles of road with several subdivisions currently being built. We also started our street sweeping in twenty eighteen, and we have not increased staff since twenty oh eight. And finally, we did last year, we started doing some contract snow removal. We, we had pretty good reviews. Everybody seemed to think that our response was a little bit quicker and a little bit better. Of course, all that really depends on all the different snows that you have. But it did help. We still had our supervisor out there plowing snow as well. But we need to discuss with the board, maybe at the retreat, what your thoughts were, and if you want to extend that or expand that, I guess it is expand that service enough. And that's we'll talk about the combined water and wastewater fund. Here you can see the department's structure. Bob Lemley, our utility superintendent, is also with us tonight on the Zoom meeting. And the city does operate a water production and a wastewater treatment plant. And in twenty twenty-one, the Main Street Water Line and the Wastewater Master Plan were completed. We also produced three hundred and sixty-five million gallons of drinking water. We completed fifty-five water taps and repaired forty-three main breaks, and I don't know. I don't know that we had that many sewer main breaks last year. We had several lift stations that went down, but I don't know. I don't know if anybody doesn't know about the big hole that we had on Main Street just a couple days ago, where the guy spent oh, two days trying to dig that out, and it was twenty feet deep and twenty feet wide and got the sewer back in service there, but when they, when they have main breaks or sewer sewer main problems, that is a real chore and you really got to thank the people that are doing that work. That was nasty work, working in that sewer that would continue to flow. But they got in there and they got it fixed, so we really need to thank those, that crew. And we also treated three hundred and forty million gallons of wastewater. And they also do work orders, about thirteen hundred, and they had about four thousand locates. Next slide. And obviously, one of our key things, well, let's go over to the budget summary. You can see on the utility side, the personnel services, what is that, about twenty-some percent? And a lot in capital outlay and capital improvements. This is where your bigger projects get funded out of. So the budget is about seven and a half million dollars. In twenty twenty-two, obviously, we want to make sure that we continue to operate the, both our plants very well and not get any permit violations. Our Highland Sewer Project has been awarded. The bid price was a hundred and fifty-four thousand to Menke Excavation, should be completed this summer. The raw water pump station, copper ion generator, campground lift station is, is out to bid now. We have a bid opening of June eighth, and we want to get that to the board, hopefully on their June sixteenth meeting. So we can get that project going, but that'll be a big project next year. And as we get the GIS program up and running, two of our major I guess, assets within the city are utilities, water and sewer. So we'll have to get those facilities located and get them put into our GIS system. And we would like to continue the continuation of the cured and placed pipe slip-in program. And it's a cost-effective maintenance program that does not require excavation. It inserts a plastic liner into an old sanitary sewer main. Their project, this type of project provides additional service life to the pipe and reduces infiltration. And staffing. So the water plant runs seven days per week, twenty hours a day. Sometimes longer in the summer when we have high demand days. The plant staff is four operators and a plant manager. Our second shift person is typically one person. There's one person on shift, which, which really is not safe at a plant. If somebody got hurt or went down or with the chemicals that they deal with. If, if an incident occurred, there would be nobody there other than that one person. So there is a safety issue that we're concerned with. And we'd have improved maintenance capabilities, better coverage, less overtime on holidays and during unplanned absences. We do need to, or I would recommend, to review the utility rates, tap fees and impact fees to ensure that our city costs are being recovered and implement an annual meter replacement program. Metering of water is how we pay for the utility. It's imperative that our meters are read, are reading accurately. And you can see on the agenda, the regular agenda this evening. One of the actions is we, we did go ahead and order sixty-seven, I don't remember, they were sixty-six dollars. We, we ordered a lot of meter replacements, but to make sure that we're measuring the amount of water that we're producing, it affects both our water revenue and our wastewater. Next slide, please. Continue to review the South Senator sewer needs and costs. Later, after, at the end of the regular agenda, H D L will present and discuss the current status and cost for that South Sewer Project, so we'll go into it here. And review fund cash flow to issuance. The utilities department has several future projects that have significant financial implications. And will probably need to be financed, and we probably will take a look at that more at the retreat. And I know Stephen and Cynthia have been looking at it a lot. We've got several really big projects coming up. And at some point, the plan was to rebuild the water plant, and that's a very large project, so. Next slide. The Transportation Sales Tax Fund. Transportation sales tax, a half-cent sales tax that was approved by the voters. Funds are used for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, repairing and maintaining street sidewalks and trails. And we have bid the Mill and Overlay Program for this year. And we bid it in April, should begin in June. The contract is six hundred and four thousand. The area was the Culture Edition, Rain Tree, Hillcrest, and Rock Creek subdivisions. Superior Bowen is the contractor, and they should be starting shortly. Next slide, please. And we'd like to encourage continuation of the street sweeping program. Complete Streetscape East Project in downtown Smithville. That should be done by the fall. Street Maintenance Services, which include our crack sealing, pothole repair, permanent maintenance. All those should be continued. The Parks and Rec Facility. Some of the funds for the design are coming out of this. It's probably going to have to be a face construction. We will get estimates on on the facility for construction, hopefully by August. That's what I'm asking for. And the implementation of our transportation master plan, we expect the completion of the transportation master plan by the end of the year. So, next slide, please. Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund. Add to the half-cent sales tax approved by the voters for funding capital improvements. This tax has a sunset of twenty years, so twenty thirty-eight. And you can see the road, the projects that have been completed with this, several significant projects. Emily Road Improvements, which I was glad were done before I got here. Streetscape Project, Second Creek Road Bridge, Hundred and Eighty-Eighth Street Trail, Commercial Sidewalk and the Main Street Trail.
Onto the Parks and Stormwell Sales Tax Fund. This is a half-cent sales tax that was approved by the voters on June second of twenty twenty. This has a sunset to be in two thousand and forty, so twenty years. And this sales tax was used for the purpose of operating, maintaining and funding or financing parks and recreation needs and stormwater control. Some of the key projects that are in progress and to be completed for parks will be completing the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which should be completed next month for the presentation. Opening the splash pad at Diamond Crest, hoping to have that open this summer. And then the paving Smith Fork Park Access Road, which is added on to one of Chuck's projects on the road to hopefully be started in July and completed in September. And the access road is the access road that is, takes you into Smith Fork Park near the soccer fields to the new parking lot there.
And what was left, which wasn't much, I had to just do this without much funding, but we did get the heavily, healthy dam we certified. The D N R inspects those dams, and we provided the paperwork necessary for them to come out and we certify that dam as being safe. We did submit our MS four application, and we replaced several crossword pipes on Main Street along with the trail project. We did one on Pope Lane and Cliff Drive as well.
On the park side, for the discussion points in twenty twenty-two, hopefully we have some great discussion at the board retreat next week to start looking at implementing those Parks and Rec Master Plan goals and project prioritization for the future. So excited to get those conversations going that we can pass on to the future IQ and Landmark Studio to put in the final plan for that to be presented to.
So we submitted our MS four application, and now we have to do our stormwater management plan. So one of our goals for twenty twenty, well, we'll have to have it completed by the end of twenty twenty-one, but it'll be implemented in twenty twenty-two will be a stormwater master plan. And hoping our new management analysts will help, be a big help in getting that put together. We'd like the community to consider a stormwater master plan. The plan could prioritize improvement projects, provide a condition rating similar to the PCI for the storm sewer infrastructure. And they could put all the storm sewer infrastructure into the GIS program. And one of the low-hanging fruits projects required by the MS four program is to provide those drain streams notices, little emblems or some, sometimes they're stamped into the tops of the inlet, but we've got little emblems to glue on to the tops of all of our stormwater inlets, and we've got five hundred of those to do this year. And that helps, you know, just provide that education. Next slide. And on the sanitation fund, we did negotiate a new solid waste service contract with W C A and G F L. You can see some of the things that we've accomplished in that new agreement. We're reducing the service charge while maintaining the current services of pickup and two bulky pickups. When we brought this to the board, Alder Woman Wilson requested us to take, go back to W C A and see if we couldn't increase the senior discount from ten percent, and the agreement that will be brought before the board will have a fifteen percent senior discount. We are going to establish a downtown cardboard recycling spot. And G F L W C A is going to sponsor a paper shredding and e-waste event. And we are going to put some educational decals to the tops of those recycling carts. So people know what to recycle and what not to.
Stephen, do you want me to take the last, or you want to comment on it real quick?
No, you certainly can. I was going to turn this over to Cynthia to talk about our next steps as we enter the board retreat and look ahead to the rest of the budget process.
Well, before we go into that, I know we're getting right up at, at time. I appreciate your all's attention. There is a lot of information that's been presented tonight, and we've kind of flown right through it. Obviously, happy to address any questions, concerns the board has, but I do want to note, I am very proud of the accomplishments of this staff and all of our staff over the last twelve months. Their professionalism and their commitment to providing services to the citizens. There's a lot that's been done, and we're looking forward to continuing that progress. Thinking about next steps in the budget process, Chuck alluded to it. We, and I spoke about this last year. We need to make sure we understand where we stand in the utility fund, the wastewater master plan and the water master plans both outline some significant projects and costs. We also, later tonight, will have some information on some additional costs for a project. We need to ensure that we understand that fund, particularly where revenues are, how, as Chuck outlined, what user fees are, what rates might need to be increased, and we might need to issue debt. So we need to have continued discussion on those this summer. In June, we'll bring forward, staff has been working on the capital improvement plan, taking information from priorities that, that we've had in the past and looking at where funds are. Bringing forward recommendations, and as Stephen noted, providing that in a format that provides some additional information makes it a little bit easier to follow the, the C I P process. In June, would also like to do a recap. We still have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the CARES Fund. I want to talk to you all about how we would recommend allocating those funds as well as the one point nine million dollars we anticipate receiving for the American Recover React. As I indicated, we'd like to have that discussion in June. And then we'll have ongoing review and discussion of Parks and Recreation Master Plan. But we wanted to ensure that you all had this information to at least begin to inform your thoughts as we jump into the retreat next week. So really, as I said at the beginning, appreciate all that staff has done and look forward to what we'll be able to accomplish in the coming year.
Thank you. That's the agenda, so we'll Linda, do we have to adjourn this one, or can we just roll right into the next meeting?
We kind of need to adjourn this one.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Marv, who's, who was it? Marv? All right, Dan, second. All who's in favor of adjourning, say aye. All opposed, say no. All right, we're standing adjourned. And now I'll call, let's go and take a quick five-minute bio break. I know you guys probably need it. We'll start, we'll start at seven ten. Linda, we're going to stay live. It's fine, unless you need to end it and restart it. Kelly, did Smithville win?
In twenty-one to one, we mercy rolled them in.